Good evening. It is Monday, October 21st, 2024. This is the Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call and meeting order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cindy, have you had a chance to take attendance?
I have taken all. Everyone is present. You have the form.
We'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing notice up this evening, a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the addition of projects to the Carney Westside CID Community Improvement District pursuant to the requirements of Section 67.1431 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. Before I open the floor for public hearing, if you would wish to speak for or against or share any thoughts on the proposal, would have you move forward to the podium, state your name and address for record. Open the floor for public comments and input. Ryan, do we have anybody online?
There is no indication that anyone wants to speak.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Lyndon Hetzel, 13318 Plattsburgh Road, Carney, Missouri. And I'm a resident in the area since 1984. And though I'm outside the city limits, I do try to stay connected to regional activities. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service and for the opportunity to speak to the proposal, the petition. And that you put it at the front of the meeting is really great. So I have to admit that I don't have a great deal of information about the actual acreage. Do we know yet what the acreage is? Can I ask a question? I shouldn't do that.
So.
That's okay.
We don't know yet.
Okay, that's fine. So we have 14 acres and of course, we're in the middle of an extreme drought and periodic rain bombs flood us. So my approach is more about environmental consequences of everything we do in the region. So in just responding to the notice in the paper, which was certain public improvements, including but not limited to street improvements, detention, which I assume is water detention, water line extensions, sidewalks and trails, sanitary sewers, stormwater, trash cleanup, and streetscaping, many of which sound wonderful. I would just ask if the possible consequences, the following consequences have been considered in the petition and response to it, and that is environmental concerns such as light pollution. I'm acutely aware of how we're losing our night sky with the development that's occurring across the county. And so when these improvements are made, street lights are often put up and that has a far-reaching impact. The glow of Carney is much more prominent now than it was, of course, many years ago. The other thing is to think about the destruction of natural resources. And I admit I haven't been to the site, so I don't know if it's a former row crop field that has nothing left in it, or if there is great tree lines, fence lines with trees and shrubs for wildlife and birds, insects, pollinators, those sorts of things, if they might be there to take them into consideration with the project. And any damaging changes in land use. So that can be very broad. I would also ask for you to consider biodiversity preservation, and that would mean mitigating efforts to protect the ecosystems and the biodiversity by reducing the habitat destruction and promoting sustainable or repetitive land use practices as you do the project. And that could be, there may be non-natives there now, like Bush and his stuff, on calorie pair. And so when the project is closed in and finished off and the escaping is done, it could be done in natives, Missouri natives, that would promote wildlife, habitat, and food, because a lot of those are struggling, migrating birds, those sorts of things. And there are many resources in the city and I'd be happy to share those with you. So have anyone, has anyone read the Loax by Dr. Seuss to your children or grandchildren? I'm here speaking for the tree. And I have a copy of what I presented. Thanks.
Thank you for taking the time and sharing your opinion.
You're welcome. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Would anybody else wish to speak for or against the addition of projects to the Carney Westside CID? Seeing none, I will close the floor for public comment and input. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? It appears it's only a motion approving our previous meeting's minutes.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to ordinances. The first item this evening is a motion approving Bill Number 332024 presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance amending Chapter 500 Building Codes and Building Permits, Article 1 Building Codes of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri by adopting and updating the building code with local amendments. David, you have the floor?
Yeah, I provided a memo to the board that's in your packet. So since this ordinance was introduced to the board in the previous meeting, we did accept some comments from the public. We also had a public meeting. I had a few people in attendance there. We did make a few changes to the proposed amendment. There are two of those. They're on page, I think three of the amendment, but it looks like it says page nine at the bottom of my quarter. So the wood frame wall insulation value, we reduced down from 20 plus down to 13, which is the insulation value that we currently use under the 2012 code, also the, it was used in the 2006 code, and a lot of communities in our area also use that as their insulation. We did look at maybe trying to up that just a little bit, but the cost to install versus the utility savings was far enough out that it didn't make sense. And so we went along with R13. And then directly under that, we removed the requirement, previous ordinance was a little bit confusing on the basement insulation, and we wanted, we had some language to clarify that. So on unfinished basements, the requirement to insulate has been removed. If you do a finished basement, well, then you wouldn't need to insulate like you would the rest of the house. Since we made that change, we did contact the builder that inquired about those two items. To my knowledge, we've not heard any update from them since then. So I think that that satisfies their questions of what they're looking at. Staff recommend approval of this ordinance. If you have any questions, if you have any trends that you have.
I appreciate staff. The two items that were brought to my attention from the builders that they had concern of was requiring R15 from R13. You mentioned that's been changed to still allow R13, and then the clarification on the basement insulation. So I appreciate staff listening to our builders and taking their concerns into consideration. Any questions from staff on the proposed ordinance update? Seeing none, if we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 500 Building Codes and Building Permits, Article 1 Building Codes of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri by adopting and updating the building code with local amendments.
Page two, first read. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 500 Building Codes and Building Permits, Article 1 Building Codes of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri by adopting and updating the building code with local amendments.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving Bill Number 402024 presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance amending Chapter 205 Animal Regulations, Sections 205, 01, 0 through 205, 07, 0, related to animals running at large and adding Section 205, 215 prohibiting the feeding of certain animals. David?
Yeah, so since the last board meeting, we introduced this at the last meeting, and we've made some additional changes because there were some comments or questions raised by the public, or maybe even members also. So we did make a few changes. They're highlighted in blue in our packet. So the definition of running at large, we had some categories that help define running at large, when the dog is on private property, when the dog is on their own private property, the animal, when they're on their own private property, property of their owner, and then when they're on public property. Public property was a really good addition because that has to do with the dog park. So we allow dogs off-leash at the dog park. We needed to make sure that that was included in the definition of running at large, so it's not defined running at large. And then on the lease requirement, if you remember this question about having somebody 18 walk the dog, we modified that to include no age restriction, as long as they're responsible and are strong enough and capable enough to hold the dog. So little kids can walk the little chihuahua or the other little puppies, and the bigger dogs require somebody bigger and stronger to walk them. And then where we talk about a little bit further in Section 205, 215, there were questions about feeding a stray feral and wild animals. We don't want to prevent people from feeding birds or other animals. It's, don't do it in a manner that creates a nuisance. So we added some definitions or some clarifications of what constitutes a nuisance. So if you feed a stray cat food and it creates some odors, offensive odors, or if they excessive noise, things like that, where you would create a nuisance, you can't do that. And then also, we clarified the bird feeder. There's comments about telling people how to put out bird feeders. Again, not really what we were trying to do. So we modified the language a little bit, as long as you maintain the area below the feeder, so that other animals you're not trying to attract don't come to the bird feeder. You can feed the birds however you want to. And those are, those are the changes that we made since the last meeting. Hopefully that addressed comments that were raised by the public and the board. What we're working on, our goal is to try, ordinance doesn't address cats at all. We did get a donation for a TNR program, and so we want to make sure that we add something that deals with cats or feeding of animals, so we can more effectively perform our.
Thank you for that report. Any questions from the board to staff on the proposed ordinance?
I actually have one. We had talked at the last meeting about making sure that dogs that killed a rabbit in the yard were not, is that, did we change that?
That would be the next one.
The next one, okay.
That one was kind of a last minute one after we prepared the ordinance already, so we had to do it in two.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other questions or concerns with the ordinance as presented. If we could read the ordinance on the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter 205 Animal Regulations, Sections 205.010 through 205.070, related to animals running at large and adding Section 205 dot 215 prohibiting the feeding of certain animals.
Make a motion to approve on first read?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 205 Animal Regulations, Sections 205.010 through 205.070, related to animals running at large and adding Section 205.215 prohibiting the feeding of certain animals.
Make a motion on second read? Second. Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item for consideration is a motion approving Bill Number 412024 presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance amending Chapter 205 Animal Regulations, Sections 205, 110, related to animals that bite other domesticated animals. David?
Yeah, I like the stress that you made on the, on the added additional word, the domesticated. So we're not worried about a dog that might pull a mole out of the yard. We're not worried about the dog that might attack, you know, somebody else's dog. We had, we're domesticated in that language, and that's the only change this month.
Any questions from the board or staff on the proposed ordinance and the most recent update? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter 205 Animal Regulations, Sections 205 dot 110, related to animals that bite other domesticated animals.
Move to approve on first reading?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter 205 Animal Regulations, Sections 205 dot 110, related to animals that bite other domesticated animals.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second. Pull the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving Bill Number 422024 presented by Carolyn Yatsuk, our Economic Development Director, in ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri, adding Chapter 135, Article 4 of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri. Carolyn?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Board. As you'll recall, the Board of Aldermen adopted an economic development incentives policy in January of 2024, which included tax abatement pursuant to Chapter 353 of Missouri State Statutes. The ordinance before you this evening simply adds Chapter 135, Article 6 to the code to include provisions related to tax abatement under the urban redevelopment and corporation law. So basically, it allows for us to utilize Chapter 353 for tax abatement.
Thank you for that report. Any questions from the board? I would like to make a correction. I think, I believe I said Article 4. It is actually Article 6. So that was my error. As the agenda states, Article 6 is correct. If there are no questions from the board, if we can read the proposed ordinance in the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri, adding Chapter 135, Article 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri.
Move to approve on first reading?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri, adding Chapter 135, Article 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion on the second reading?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next up is a motion approving Bill Number 432024 presented by Carolyn Yatsuk, our Economic Development Director, in ordinance approving the K353 redevelopment plan pursuant to Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri declaring the redevelopment area described therein as a blighted area and approving the K353 redevelopment policy. Before we do that, we do have to, we have noticed up a public hearing regarding the proposed tax abatement in the K353 redevelopment plan per Section 353.110 subsection 3 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, providing an opportunity for all political subdivisions to be heard. This time, I'll open the floor for any political subdivision that would like to speak on the proposed ordinance. Floor is open. I believe the school district prepared a statement they wanted to write in for the record. Carolyn, if you could read that in, please?
That is correct. We thank Sheila Ernst and Carolyn Yatsuk for partnering with the taxing jurisdictions regarding the K353 redevelopment incentive. The proposal has considered our feedback and is not abating, and is not abating at the minimum level. Instead, the abatement is based on future revenue, which will not impact our current budgeted expenditures. If the K353 program is abundantly used, we ask that the board continue to monitor the impact on taxing jurisdictions. New revenue is how we pay for salary increases and new positions. Example, school resource officer. Many thanks, Dr. Emily Miller.
Great, thank you. Mr. Fort, Farm Marshal, are you here, should be here, or do you have a message on behalf of the district? Okay, all right. Close the floor for any public, public political subdivision to share their, any comments or feedback? Any questions from the board to staff on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the K353 redevelopment plan pursuant to Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri declaring the redevelopment area described therein as a blighted area and approving the K353 redevelopment plan policy.
Make a motion to approve on first read?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the K353 redevelopment plan pursuant to Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri declaring the redevelopment area described therein as a blighted area and approving the K353 redevelopment plan policy.
Move to approve on second read?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving Bill Number 442024 presented by Carolyn Yatsuk, our Economic Development Director, in ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Carney, Missouri approving a petition to add projects to the Carney Westside CID Community Improvement District. Carolyn?
So a boundary map can be found in the agenda packet on page 196. The language of the existing CID, so the CID was originated in 2007, and the language in that existing CID petition is restrictive and only allows the funds that are generated from the CID to be used for construction and maintenance of Bennett Boulevard and Shank's Avenue. The CID Act allows for many other public improvements to be able to be funded, and the property owners within the district have petitioned to allow the following public improvements. So street improvements would continue, adding detention, water line extension, sidewalks and trails, sanitary sewer, stormwater, trash cleanup, and streetscaping. And that concludes my presentation.
Carolyn, could you just remind the board of kind of the petition process? It doesn't, I mean, they, they start to go through a petition and certification process, correct, for reimbursement?
So the petition has already been submitted to the city clerk. The city clerk reviewed the petition, made sure that it was compliant with the CID Act, which it, which it was. So now the petition is being brought before you all for your approval.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance by title only for the first reading?
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Carney, Missouri, approving a petition to add projects to the Carney Westside Community Improvement District.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Carney, Missouri, approving a petition to add projects to the Carney Westside Community Improvement District.
Move to approve on second read?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Last ordinance this evening is a motion approving Bill Number 452024. Thank you, Megan. Presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance approving the Innovation Fourth Plat, Lot 8 Site Plan at 940 Premier Drive as submitted by RCF Investments. Dave?
Yeah, RCF Investments proposes to build a 13,500 square foot building in Innovation Fourth Plat. So that's the newest phase of innovation. The building would be similar to Travis Hendrick's building next door. P&amp;Z recommended with unanimous approval, let it be approved with some additions in the ordinance. Ryan Flusmeier of RCF is online. He's attending the meeting. It will be assumed today. So if there are any questions for the applicant, he can answer some questions.
Anything to add from the staff report from our planning and zoning liaison?
No, there wasn't a lot to discuss on this.
Any questions from the board to our planning and zoning liaison or staff or the applicant that's on duty? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the Innovation Fourth Plat, Lot 8 Site Plan at 940 Premier Drive as submitted by RCF Investments.
Make a motion to approve on first read?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the Innovation Fourth Plat, Lot 8 Site Plan at 940 Premier Drive as submitted by RCF Investments.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Mr. Flusmeier, thanks for joining this evening. Congratulations on your approval and appreciate you picking Carney over Excelsior. So we're, we're happy to welcome you here. We have no resolutions this evening. We'll move on to items for review and presentation. First, we'll start off with the 2025 Employee Benefits Summary and Recommendation presented by our city administrator, Sheila.
Thank you. First, I want to let everybody know that Scott Hapner with Bukati is here, and he will answer any questions. I want to kind of just give you a summary of what happened and what the recommendation is. Bukati sent requests for proposals to employee insurance and benefit providers on our behalf. United Healthcare, who is our current employee health insurance provider, proposed a 13% rate increase. We also received proposals from Woodcross Blue Shield of Kansas City, Gravy, Cigna, and Aetna. Aetna proposed rates that will result in an overall decrease of 1.38%, which is an estimated savings of almost $7,600 annually in health insurance premiums. That's not necessarily just the city's share. It also relates to employees' shares. These savings would allow rates that employees are paying to remain the same and, and for some plans be reduced. This will help the city's employee benefit package that is offered to employees remain competitive. And the rates can be found on page 270 of the agenda packet. Also, at the dais, I put a copy at each of their place. There was a scripener's error on the city's cost of the employee-only high deductible health plan. So you'll see, I marked that in pink, and it should read $791.72 instead of $771.72, making the total monthly rate $811.72. Additionally, staff recommends continuing the $300 per month health savings account contribution for employees that are enrolled in the city's high deductible health plan. The city made HSA contribution last year, and that $300 is included in the rates that are shown on the table to reflect the true monthly cost per employee. Other employee benefit recommendations include switching to Delta Dental for employee dental insurance, switching to Delta Vision for employee vision insurance, switching to Guardian for disability, life, and accident, and critical illness insurance. We also would like to recommend that we continue with New Directions. However, they just rebranded and are now known as Lucid for the city's employee assistance plan. There's a recommendation to increase the basic life insurance provided by the city from $25,000 to $50,000, and adding a limited flexible spending account to the employee benefit package, which will allow employees to save money pre-tax for their health and dependent care expenses. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Scott may be better suited. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Scott may be better suited.
Yeah, thank you and all the staff involved in working up our annual proposal with the help of our, with Bukati. My only question is, I hate playing the game of switching insurance all the time. I understand, you know, a decrease to employees and taxpayers is better than a thirteen percent increase, but just curious, I level, if we could explain truly how that changes, the proposed change rather, is going to affect our employees' ability to still receive the same service that they're used to now, the same hospitals being networked, same providers, that sort of thing. I don't want to look at just the savings as a savings if it's going to create, you know, an adverse reaction to our staff.
Absolutely. We, in small group, which is what City of Kearney is, one of the ways that we can combat the just every year going up is to shop. We do very much take into accord that we don't want to change every year. The good thing is with what we call BUKA, Blue Cross, United, Cigna, and Aetna, their networks, their large networks are all very similar. There's about ninety-seven percent overlap, so we very, very rarely find that, I mean, if we do, it's literally a one-off. You'll notice that we don't really look at any of the carriers that you don't know the names. Because of that exact area, we want to make sure that we are not having a transition of care and having problems with that. Unfortunately, in small group, it's just the, without getting the new business discounts every two to three years, you can't remain competitive. And that's where we need to capture because of the carrier methodology of you're credible when you run bad, you're not credible when you run well. We have to go out and capture those new business discounts.
So, next to you? That explains why we shop, but it didn't explain or go into detail about my concern about the change of policies, the differences. Are deductibles going to be higher? Can they still, you know, go to the same hospitals and clinics that they're used to going to, that sort of thing?
And that's where that ninety-seven percent overlap on the networks, we don't have a lot of problems because on the average with those four major carriers, there's about a three percent tops, and that again, maybe one percent from one carrier moving to the next, one percent, so on and so forth. What we do is we always try to compare apples to apples and match up the deductibles as close as we can and the out-of-pockets. Those are one of the two key things is what's a deductible and what's my out-of-pocket? So, we absolutely, that is one of the foremost things. If anything, we try to increase benefit, but unfortunately, the carriers each have their differences and their out-of-pockets and their deductibles in some cases change, but we do try to match them up as close as we can. And I've been with the city for quite a few years, we've had some changes. This year, we've been trying to limit those changes by not having multiple networks, by having the large network. I think that would maybe be your answer is not confusing having multiple networks, things like that.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I do. Now, on this, the way you're talking is like every year, we're going to be going out for bid, but after a while, nobody wants to work with us, so, I mean, is this a, like, is this a teaser rate and we got to stay two years, next year, we're stuck with the higher premium, or how's that work?
So, in small group, they don't get upset when you shop and move. In large group, they get very upset when you shop and move. So, if it's under a hundred, we shop every year. Now, we do that for the simple fact, do we want to move every year? No. We, we as your consultants, don't want to move every year. We do this so we can use that to negotiate your renewals down. So, when we start with an eighteen or seventeen, we're utilizing competitive data to bring those down, but we shop it every year and you are not, we have not seen, I've been doing this twenty-eight years, we've never had an issue in small group. In large group, absolutely, hundred plus, they get very upset when you move or act. You know, in small group, with my experience and our agency experience, there has been no hindrance.
Thank you.
So, I noticed, looking at the deductibles and out-of-pocket, if you compare the Aetna plans to the United Healthcare plans, you know, for example, the high deductible, according to this, the deductible is going to go up five hundred dollars for an individual, a thousand dollars for family, and twelve hundred calendar year out-of-pocket is going to go up, and the calendar year out-of-pocket max for family going up three thousand dollars.
And unfortunately, we, in small group, everything is cookie cutter from the carriers. You can't pick and choose to change different areas, so when we look at the different plans, we have to match up as close as we can and the deductibles and all those different types of things, and we try to match up the deductibles. One of the reasons on the HDHP is each year, the IRS is increasing that, so a lot of our employer groups have gone just to a four thousand mitigate having to change that every year because the IRS says that you have to change that thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred, thirty-four hundred, so a lot of them are just going to a flat four thousand and they don't have to move that from there. But in small group, unfortunately, there's just the cookie cutter plans from the carriers, and they don't all line up.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I would like to applaud staff, though. Adding the FSA, I think, is a great idea for those people that are not participating in the high deductible plan. This also allows them to reduce their tax, their tax base, and it also, by the same token, also reduces the tax burden on the city, where they may, where they're telling us that there's a six hundred and seventy-five dollar cost annually, which is pretty negligible, that may, you may see that actually be a wash depending on how many people participate. So, I think that's a great idea. It also works really well for families that have dependent care because it lets them take that money off pre-tax, so the dollars go a little farther. So, those two, that's very good, and then obviously, I love the idea of also adding to their health or to their life insurance.
All right, if we have no other questions, if we can entertain a motion to approve the Employee Benefit Recommendations asked presented, which would include both additional recommendations, including the allocation of the city employees' shared premiums for the twelve-month period beginning December first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and authorize and direct the city administrator to execute all documents required to carry out this motion.
Make a motion on first read.
Second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you for being here. Next item is wastewater plant anti-
There's a phone, we thought he left it.
Oh, it's from the-
Was that from Ms. Hessel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, no.
I can drop it off at her house.
Yeah, good idea.
Next item is wastewater plant anti-degradation report and collection system modeling presented by Laura Gray, sorry, and Andrew Connor from Lamprey Neersen.
Go back to the first slide.
Bump slot here.
One more. Well, that one works too. I want you to go to the next one, wait. Okay, so, hi, thanks for letting us come and share this long, these two projects with you. I'm Laura Gray, I'm the Wastewater Practice Lead at Lamprey Neersen, so I'm over our wastewater team. Greg Kendall, who might have seen before, works for me, and he completed the anti-deg study, I did the, I did reviews, but he had a conflict and is at another public meeting tonight, so you get me instead of him. So, I'm here, I'm Laura Gray, and then Andrew Connor is one of my project special engineers. I'm going to present the anti-deg study, Andrew will do the collection system, so. Okay, so, the big thing here, and I think I could say one thing and I could stop, and it's that your plant's basically almost at capacity and it's time to expand. That's, that's the whole thing, I probably don't even have to say anything else. So, your current plant is a one point one-two-five million gallon a day plant, that's what MGD stands for, it's one and an eighth. Your current flows are over one million gallons a day. That means it's every day operating about over ninety percent, it's time to expand. That's why we did the anti-deg study, and anti-deg study is that first step in expanding a plant because you have to get permission from the state to do it. So, you have to do it because the state tells you you have to. You have to show that you're going to continue to protect the downstream water. Anti-deg basically just means you're not going to further degrade the water downstream. And we completed that report last year, submitted it in December. DNR, you know, doesn't always work or act really fast, they approved it in July, they put it out on public notice, and they have agreed and said that you can expand your plant to a specific, you can double your plant and meet specific effluent limits. And your current plant, like I said, it's a one and one-eighth, one point one-two-five MGD plant, and when we did this plant back in, when it was last upgraded, over two thousand and eight, nine, it was designed to where it would be easily doubled, so we can go up to two and a quarter pretty easy. And a lot of those processes are made already to go up to two and a quarter. When we worked on this report and we worked with city leaders, city, your city staff, you know, we looked at your growth rates and the estimates was from two to five percent maybe for your population. We also looked at the wastewater growth, and sometimes that's even more than your other, especially as you bring in industries and other things, and so your wastewater looking at residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, working with you guys, we came up and said, okay, five point eight percent, this is supportable, and when we look at five point eight percent and the required study period by Department of Natural Resources of twenty years, that pushes your flow up to two point seven seven million gallons a day. So, the problem with that is that it's more than two point two-five. So, what we suggested and recommended and what we did in this report was we said, well, we need to look at a two-phase expansion for you guys. Phase one is let's double your plant, and then phase two would be put another, what it is right now, the one point one-two-five, put another, one hole for another train in there and make it, so it'd be triple what it is now. And so, we looked at two phases. The study has been approved for you to go ahead and start planning expansion to the two and a quarter. So, that's the good part, it's been approved, the next steps, you're ready to go. Okay, let's see, where am I at? I don't know. So, in the study, I'm not going to, I mean, it's a pretty good-sized report, you can read it if you want to at bedtime sometime, but we looked at lots of alternatives, but the ones for the non-degrading to where you're going to put out water that's as good a quality as you are doing now, but doubling your plant, state always makes us look at regionalization, which means, hey, let's go connect to Excelsior or something. Nobody wants to do it, it's not feasible, it's too expensive. To make you look at, what can we do this without even discharging, it's not an option. And then we looked at more of an advanced treatment alternative, which is what's needed to get down to those tighter limits, and for this initial evaluation, we looked at what's called a membrane bioreactor, and we had an estimated cost of like thirty million for phase one, and I can't remember what it was for phase two. So, this is what an MBR would look like on your existing facility. The good thing is that the very little square in the middle that is between the two big circles, circles, that's your headworks, we don't have to upgrade that yet. That has pumps, filters, I mean, pump screens, grip, that stuff's good to go because it was planned to be doubled, and we've done some other projects there. What we would add is called anoxic basins, and then the square little, the square ones in the middle, those were your original plant years ago that had been converted once, those would be converted to pre-irration basins, and then from there, we would go to these new MBR treatment options, which, to save construction and everything, it can be built inside the clarifier. A clarifier is what takes your wastewater and it clarifies, it makes it clean before it discharges. The MBRs don't need a clarifier because they're like a filter, and if you press it one more time, that's just what one of the MBR units looks like, we just replaced those in Liberty. We replaced to this unit in Liberty at their plant, and the water sucked through it. You would not need the other clarifier down there. We'd also, you need upgrades for sludge, so you'd get another digester or sludge building. And the one thing with this MBR is that we'd have to build some peak flow storage because it can't handle really big flows, which Andrew's going to talk to you about your collection system, and there's some really big peaks in your system from rainwater, groundwater getting into it. So, that's what the plant would look like as one option, and let's see, I think that's about what I had there. Yep, and then the next steps for you guys is if you want to grow, it's time to build and expand your plant, that's the biggest thing. There's a few things to do, facility planning, during facility planning, this proposal of a membrane bioreactor, we would look at other treatment options besides that that can get us down to that level of treatment, so we'd look at different treatment options. We would look at the peak flow storage, we priced concrete ones because they're expensive, and we'd look for other alternatives to that, see how we could best manage holding that peak flow. We'd hold it and then let it go back through during the night or something. Lots of people are doing SRF funding, it's kind of the way most of these communities, these projects are done. You can submit for SRF funding anytime and then complete a facility plan and submit it in the middle of it, and do facility planning, submit it, start design, and then go to construction. If you have any questions, that's the quick, the quick version of the anti-deg, I tried to do really fast, and then I'm going to let Andrew talk about the collection system, but I'll take questions if you have them.
Is there an idea for usage for, you say we, we no longer need that other clarifier? Is there any way to make that facility help with our flow at all?
That would be something we could look at. The problem, it might have a lot to do with hydraulics and where, where things get punctured. When we look at a facility planning, we could say, is that able, is it big enough? Could we use it for storage, and if so, could we get it there? Thing is, the clarifier's at the end of the plant, so you'd have to pump it back up again. So, it's all got to do with hydraulics and how things are flowed through the plant, and for a future expansion for more membrane bioreactors, it would probably be used for that, for a future expansion.
David, could you go to page eight of the presentation, please?
I want to, yes.
So, this is the one that you said we would not need in service anymore?
Right now, well, whichever one we did or didn't use.
Is there, we're going to leave one of these peak flows here to the back of the plant where, I mean, this is our walking trail, hundreds of people walk by every day.
So, your site is very tight and you have flood issues, and it's the FEMA flood map that I know is cutting here. I don't know, I think it might be cutting here, but yeah, the, where things are is what facility planning is for. I do know that there's, the site is fairly constrained, which is another- I do know that there's, the site is fairly constrained, which is another reason we recommended to go with a more advanced treatment. So we could do it in a smaller footprint. But as far as storage and where the peak flow goes, if, if it's possible to put it down here and the piping works and the FEMA flood works, but we can't put stuff in the floodway. And there, I know, I wish I had flood, the FEMA map on here, but I don't. But I do know the site's really tight. So where those go, we don't know. And what shape they have to be, we don't know. I'll see if I've got a FEMA flood map. I don't know if I do. You've got one on City West side. Yeah, I don't, I don't have it here. But the FEMA flood map is our problem out there is where the flood, flood is. It's just a tight spot.
If you want me to pull that up while I have to get out of here.
That's good.
But the, exactly where things go, that's what really planning is for and getting real specific on what size things need to be. That's just your first little layout. Don't, don't take any of that. Just don't get it.
All right, I'm going to present the collection system again. My name is Andrew Connor with Ankena Anderson as well. One of the wastewater engineers in the group. So I'm going to talk about the collection system. That's the sewer system. We did a collection system modeling project. So that entailed looking at data, flow data through the, through the system. We divided up the city into six different regions. So that's what all those different color coded regions are in the city. Just kind of to break it up to look at different flows through the city, through different branches. We modeled 10-inch and larger pipe sizes. So we have a, a good functional collection system model now of the city. And we noticed as we were running the model and looking at our report information, there's a couple of issues with wet weather. So when it rains, you get rainwater that leaks into the system. And that causes a couple of issues that I wanted to discuss and what we proposed to do about it. Excessive flood inflow and infiltration is one thing, INI. Some of you have probably heard of that. And capacity of the east interceptor is also an issue that I'll touch on here. So INI, just a quick recap of what that is. It's rainwater and groundwater actually to getting into the system, the sanitary sewer. So typically, you know, you have cracks that conform as pipes and manholes deteriorate. And that allows rainwater to leak in through the system. So typically we see about half and half, half on the public side and then half on the private side, which is that sewer lateral that goes up to your house. And so it could be both sources. We don't know. But the, the flow data that we collected, which was real-time flow data, the flow meters that showed that there was actual significant amount of INI coming to the system. And then, so thinking about the effects of that, it can increase your treatment cost because you're basically treating that water that doesn't have to normally be treated. It's not, you know, it's rainwater that shouldn't be treated, but it's getting into the sanitary sewers that has to be treated the same as the rest, as the rest of the sewer water. So that, you know, pumping in, treating it adds cost. It can also have an increase or cause sewer overflows. I don't know how many or if any of those are going on already, but there, it's possible that, you know, as INI increases, you can overflow and overtop manholes. There are just limits then also that this puts on your ability to grow as a city in the future. When pipes are full, you can't, can't increase them anymore or increase the flow of them anymore. So looking at just what you have in your system, so these are just a few examples of defects in pipes that we've seen from similar situations, like older clay pipe in other cities. So I just wanted to show you that, you know, this is kind of the things that we see that are common. And then these are a few manholes, a couple of them that we looked at. As we were characterizing and trying to figure out where all the pipes were connected. These are downstream of force mains, which come from pump stations. And those typically have higher gas issues and can cause corrosion. So what we're looking at here is just the issue of corrosion and a couple of manholes that we would definitely want to recommend real rehabilitation or replacement on. So now just dive into a little bit more of those two main issues that we saw. The, the basin that had the most INI was KO5. That's the yellow outlined area. Happens to be, I think, where we're standing at now. It's kind of this older part of the city. And the peak flows in that basin are over 10 times what an average dry water flow is. So when rain comes in, it more than 10 times increases in flow. The other issue is this east interceptor does call out there. It's on, you know, it's got two main ones. You've got one on the west and then one on the east that kind of goes through the middle down there and collects everything north of it. So that one also has some capacity issues during wet weather. So we looked at a five-year storm and during that storm in the model, these lines that are shown in the red color, they all showed that they were getting surcharged or, you know, reaching their capacity or they were full basically. And that's the, that's just like, you know, downstream of this, this part of town. So it's, it's all the lines that are red there where we would recommend increasing the pipe size. I'll take that, but not all of them. Basically from 92 down to where the green line intersects with. And then this basin also has a lot of what we call clay VCT pipe. And it is, just tends to be the older, oldest pipe material that's been used in sanitary sewers historically. So it's older, it's, it's lived its useful life basically, and it's kind of deteriorating faster than others usually. We haven't looked at those pipe conditions or just, you know, the saying that this is, how much is there right now? There's 21,000 linear feet in this KO5 basin. So it seems like it's a probable cause for the INI. And to correlate that with the actual flow data from the flow meter, so this was the flow meter that correlated with KO5. And the graph on the bottom left there shows the blue bars going up are the rainfall. So it's measuring rainfall there. And then you can see the green line behind it dramatically jumps up right after the rainfall hits. So and then the scatter graph on the right shows date points, flow points where it was exceeding the top of the pipe. So definitely shows that it was full during that storm. And then, so what do we do, what do we do about that? We recommend first doing pipe and manhole inspections in this KO5 basin. And with the intent of looking for what's the cause of this INI. So we don't, we don't know exactly where it's coming from in yet or how it's getting into the pipes yet. So we would start, recommend starting with the 21,000 linear feet of clay pipe and the manholes that are adjacent to them. And then that would lead to probably, you know, we would evaluate that and that would probably lead to an INI reduction project, which would be basically rehabilitation of lines with typically a CIPP, which is a lining that you can install on the lines. Excuse me, and manhole lining is also a common type of rehabilitation. So once that would be done, we would want to reevaluate, do some more flow metering and see, you know, how much INI we were able to reduce. The total estimate for this project right now is estimated about $3 million.
Just with rule of thumb and not with actual data.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's the case. We haven't done CCTV.
No, exactly what it looks like. We don't know we're getting into it yet exactly, but that's just a high-level estimate right now. Okay, so then the other issue to bring up is this east interceptor that the mall shows is overloaded also during a five-year storm. It's the, primarily that, the red lines there, shown on the, on the picture on the right. Close to Meadowbrook and Glen Side. So this, I can go to the next one, I think. So first, we would recommend doing that INI project. And then if that shows that you've still got an issue, we could look at other basins and do another basin approach. And then there's, there's other, so those two things are kind of related. So if we can reduce INI, then this wouldn't be as much of a problem. But if that doesn't actually solve the problem, then we need to look at options to increase capacity here on the, on the east interceptor. So one option is to construct a, a parallel sewer. So we have shown here a parallel 24-inch sewer line going from 19th Street down to the plant. So that would double your capacity basically. The other option shown here is peak flow, excess flow holding basin. And so that would, first, we'd want to look at some hydraulic modeling to verify the size of that. We don't know what size that would be yet. But we did kind of look at where it could possibly be at. One potential site we looked at was Dick Carney Recycling Center. There's kind of an open area there that could potentially work as a site for that. So that was the other option. And yeah, so just in summary, the INI reduction project would be the first thing we'd recommend. And then flow metering study again to reevaluate. And then there's other issues. Look at those other three options, other INI projects. Parallel sewer or excess flow holding basin. I think that's about all I got.
Well, I just want to say one thing on the project size. A lot of our clients will figure out what they can afford in an INI project. And we'll do an evaluation and then we come up with, and we can bid, you can bid all to it. So you can bid to do the worst of the worst. And then you can just, if you wanted to do a one and a half to $2 million project, you could do that. So, and of course, we don't know yet what any of that would cost because we haven't actually done the fieldwork. We've done the modeling and to identify the areas. So instead of just going in and saying, oh, let's go CCTV, close captioning here, take videos of your entire sewer. The purpose of this study was to identify, are there areas with problems or maybe we should start working there? So, so like the future project, you don't know what it would be yet until you do the evaluation and find out how bad, exactly where the problems are. And then it can be what people, what you can afford at the time. We've done projects that were, I guess, for, we, we did line, we did have KISIC lines and pipes here a few years ago, 300,000 or something.
Yep, in 2022, we did a small sewer rehab project.
Do you know the, our east interceptor, now that you're saying during a five-year storm, it would be above capacity? Do you or do staff know the age and size of that, if instructed?
The size, I believe, is a 24-inch. I don't know the age. I might be able to look that up.
So if you're recommending another 24-inch, we keep that pipe in service, right? It should be a duplicate?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we want to evaluate it just to verify if it's still usable or if it needs to be.
We would strongly recommend doing INI first and seeing the effect of it.
No, I understand that. Yeah, he's, he mentioned that. I was just, when, when you're saying if, if INI is the issue, I, I was just curious if, if you were going to say what you just did and that is we're replacing a 24-inch with a 24-inch, obviously that's if the INI, your recommended first step doesn't work.
They both stay in service. Both pipes stay in service.
Thank you.
That was the question. I'm sorry, didn't know.
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were proposing just paralleling it, just as an option. And I, I mean, it's, yeah, we'd want to look at it though, just to verify that it's still, you know, functioning well. With some more like CCTV of that line too. That hasn't been done yet.
David, you might correct me, but I believe a few years ago, we stopped part of that. We had put liner in part of that because it had collapsed out in behind Glen Ridge or Glen Stone or whatever it was down there.
That one I don't remember. I remember the, did some lining down, you know, 10th Street.
Yeah, but there was one on the interceptor because I.
And it could be because we weren't looking, since we haven't done CCTV, the TV yet, we were just looking at modeling. So like each of those basins at the, at a manhole at the end of it is where a flow meter went. So we could see the effect upstream of that. So we don't know, we didn't necessarily go in and figure out what has and hasn't been repaired yet, if that makes sense. And you might have lined some of those.
So I believe the, that, that's a little bit newer, I guess, interceptor you could say? I don't want to say it's real new.
The west interceptor is the newer one.
Yeah, that one's on there, but like the east one.
It's been there since the plant, I mean, it's been there a long time.
Eighties or nineties, I want to say.
I don't know.
We, I think we might have a plan somewhere for that.
E5 and 6.
So I would definitely want to look at it.
I don't know if we know the material of it.
Probably. CCTV, I'm just guessing. We definitely would want to look at the, verify its condition since it is probably 50 years old at least.
But yeah, we've, I, we've done like one and a half million feet of sewer rehab. So it's something we do every day. And it's, and if you're going to help reduce the flow down to your plant, you don't, you don't get a, just any in the water.
Yeah, not only that, but INI is not the only issue. Like it could be structural issues. Those pipes degrade over time, you know. I mean, it's worth looking at it just to make sure, you know, there's not existing structural issues. Even if they're not INI issues, you know, it can still cause some damage if it collapses, collapses somewhere in the city. You have, I think, old issues that just pop up over time. So it's not something to neglect, playing games.
Thank you both for being here. Any questions from the board? To our individuals who are representing our consultant or any additional comments from staff? It's apparent we've got, you know, we've bonded a new interchange. We're looking at, you know, we're offering incentives to, to, for the right project to grow our community, to level our tax base. Can't do any of that if we don't, if we can't adequately and properly treat waste. So.
Waste water is the, the biggest thing. You gotta, gotta have it in there first.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Next item is our monthly financial report presented by Stephanie Harris, our finance director. Stephanie?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Your financials for the six months in the September 2024 are in your packet under G. We are 50%, six months, three year. And still trending right on schedule for almost every single light item. Some of them, again, are timing and/or a lot of the ones that look, for instance, DWI drug fund revenues are running 155.7% of what we had anticipated. But when you look at the year-to-date, it's $1,500 and the only budget is $1,000. So it looks really big, but in, if you look at actual dollars, it's not. But everything else, again, seems to be running right on track. Obviously, property taxes will start coming in shortly. December, usually some light in November, but usually they start rolling in in December in January and that's whenever. You'll see some big jumps in that area. The September financials get published in the paper. It is supposed to go out on Thursday. At least I turned it in in time to get it published on Thursday, but we do have until the 31st, next Thursday, to actually meet the requirement. And that's really all for my report unless you have specific questions.
Any questions from the board on the September financial report?
Yeah. September, year-to-year on sales tax. Year-to-year on sales tax. If I'm reading this correctly, we're, we're down, is that correct?
Are you looking at revenues, the, like page 285, revenues?
284, line 13. Am I reading that correctly?
Oh, the sales tax fund?
Yes.
That's the fund overall?
Oh, that's used to, okay.
Which that one shows more revenue than expenditures by roughly 15,000.
Yeah. I was looking backwards.
And so there was a beginning balance, a fund balance, and that was planned. So we had money left over from last year that we planned and carried over and spent it at the beginning of this year to transfer money to projects. So there's, it's not that it was not budgeted.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to mayor's communications. I got several things I want to mention this evening. First is just, for everybody to know, I had the pleasure to visit with a group of homeschool kiddos here at City Hall last week, maybe the week before. I can't remember, my days are all run together. Thank you. Had a good group of kids. We had, I prepared a PowerPoint presentation, had a good conversation about local government, our responsibilities and duties as elected officials. Had a lot of good questions. So I always enjoy the opportunity to visit with the future leaders of our community. Last week, I also visited Southview Elementary. I've been visiting there every year since I've been elected mayor in 2019. Really good conversation with the fourth graders there. Always good to see Mrs. Lear and the group there. A couple of other things I wanted to mention is I would like, with the consensus of the board, to ask staff, I know this is a topic that we've discussed before, but I don't believe has ever been formally requested by the board for staff to put together consideration for us at a future meeting. But that is to require a bond for contractors that are boring in our rideaways, tearing up our city streets, working in our rideaway. For example, the city of Smithville requires all those contractors to put in place a $25,000 bond if for some reason they don't return the rideaway back to its present condition or if there is a boring issue and there's a settlement. It protects taxpayers by giving us the means to go back after the contractor and their bond. I think we're one of the only cities in the area that doesn't have some sort of ordinance that would protect taxpayers that way. And if I can just get the general consensus from the board, I think that's something that would be time well spent for staff to work on. And it looks like I have the general consensus. So I'll look forward to at a future meeting for staff to add that to your list of things that we would like to see. Next is, and I mentioned this to a resident a couple of weeks ago via an email, but I am working on consideration for the board to approve, and I hope to have it at next meeting. But adding ongoing public comments to our regular agenda item, which that would allow residents, business owners, opportunity on an ongoing basis to ask questions, share concerns, I'm sorry, share concerns to the board. I want to make sure though, and as I share with the residents, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's something that's never been on our agenda. You know, we talked about briefly as a board, the idea of doing that. I've researched some other fourth-class cities that allow that. And one example I found, and I'm going to read it right here off their agenda, is they have noticed up, if you would wish to speak to the board, you have to fill out just a basic form for the record, name, address. That's one of the questions that ask is if you have previously attempted to work out your concern or issue with City Staff Direct. And they call it good and welfare. And on their agenda, every agenda, it opens up with, during the good and welfare section of our meeting agenda, we invite residents of Carney to step forward and directly address their Board of Aldermen. Each participant is requested to clearly state their name and address and will have three minutes to present their statement. The session is specifically designed for residents to express their views or concerns. It is not intended for dialogue, debate, or question-and-answer interaction with the board. All statements made during the time will be formally recorded in the public record, and we urge participants to keep their remarks respectful and focus on matters relevant to our community. Your contributions are a vital part of our continuous efforts to enrich and improve Carney, and we thank you for adhering to these guidelines and helping us maintain the decorum of this important process. So just a reminder, like any public hearing, if that's something the board would want to put on our agenda, that would allow our residents, without having to notice up to city clerk, to share their thoughts or concerns with us. With that said, it doesn't mean that, you know, for sunshine and everything else, we can't engage in Q and A because it's, it would allow them to still speak to us, but I'm in fear that with us not being able to do a full Q and A, I guess I'm in fear that it's still going to upset some residents.
Well, we can't legally.
Correct.
Get in that discussion with them. We're in violation because it's not posted. So somehow we have to make it known to the public that, you know, we're not trying to be rude. We have rules we got to go by.
So there's been two other municipalities that I've worked for that have a public section, but both of those have very similar to what you just read, except that they add that the topic of their discussion cannot be on the current agenda. So it limits, like tonight, we couldn't have had open discussion or people talking about anything that was on our agenda. And that seemed to, in my experience, that seemed to alleviate some of the hot tempers. I'll put it that way. Because it's not on the agenda, they're not going to talk about, you know, the TNR program. It's, it's something else that, so that might be something to think about.
I, all the agendas and I watched recorded meetings, I hadn't seen that. I did see where, like some municipalities actually had a timer on the screen. And it, you know, as your time kicked down, it went from green to yellow to like an orange to red. And the other thing, this was kind of what I read as kind of a combination of what many, what many mayors read when they open up that in each section of the agenda. One of the things though, that I have seen is, hey, if, if there's a formal public hearing on the item, please save your comments for that. If somebody else has already shared the same concerns, please keep that in mind as well and that sort of thing. But I just wanted to mention to the board that that's something that I have been working on. As I did mention, I mentioned in correspondence to a resident that it's something I'm working on. But that's something that's going to require a board approval once I put that together. So more to come there. I just didn't want you guys to be surprised when, when that hits the agenda for consideration. That concludes my mayor's communication. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
The only thing I have is just a reminder that the next board meeting will be on Monday, November 4th, right here at 6:30 PM. And David has something.
Electronics recycling event this Saturday, City Hall, 9 to 12, Saturday morning.
And that's for residents and residents?
Residents, I'm late, yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman King?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Alderman Holt?
I have nothing tonight.
Alderman Lehman?
I'm good.
Alderman Barker?
I'm not going to break the streak.
We do have an executive, executive session noticed up, closed session per RSMO 610-021, subsection 1, legal action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. RSMO 610-021, subsection 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. And RSMO 610-021, subsection 13, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. And a reminder, our meeting will be adjourned from there. So this does conclude our public portion of the meeting. If we could consider a motion to enter into executive session.
I make a motion.
I'll say.
Roll call load, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Enter into the executive session. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.